Good evening. I call to order the June 15, 2015 Stillwater City Council meeting. Would everybody please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, you can see we don't have a full house, but we do have a quorum. Two of our councilors were, had scheduled. They would not be here, so we did know. Just wanted to make sure that you knew. So we have, we're going to start the meeting tonight with a proclamation for two different groups of people whom we deeply appreciate. And I know that they have representatives here. And I'm going to start with Bridgeport Tank Trucks. If you would come forward and meet me at the podium. Francisco? Nick? And Scott? Not here? Not here, okay. Whereas the emergency repair of a collapsed pipe at the SUA wastewater treatment plant on May 15 and 16, 2015, required significant equipment, material, and manpower support. And whereas Bridgeport Tank Trucks responded to this emergency need by providing 500 feet of flexible hose and rigid pipe free of charge, and delivering and installing hose, pipe, and custom fittings on a pump to make the discharge system operational. Where's Crossland Heavy Contractors? Let's just do this at the same time. This will make it easier. And then you don't have to hear me read this twice. Tyler and Chris? Whereas Crossland Heavy Contractors redirected manpower and equipment and held existing personnel and assets at the SUA site for more than 30 consecutive hours to excavate and remove the collapsed pipe and install the replacement pipe. And whereas it is impossible to fully describe these efforts within the margins of their commendation, it is sufficient to say that an environmental disaster was avoided because of Bridgeport and Crossland. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize and formally commend Bridgeport and Crossland for their dedication to duty and selfless actions in this regard. Now therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, on behalf of myself and my fellow councilors and the citizens of Stillwater, do hereby recommend Bridgeport Tank Trucks and Crossland Heavy Contractors in this proclamation. We appreciate you so much.[203.38][203.38][applause] Okay, that takes us to the consent docket. Counselors, anybody?
We would request that Item A be pulled.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. It must be in the other room.
It's not a proclamation, it's just a recognition.
A recognition, okay. Yes?
Chris Beaver.
Ah, recognition of Waste Management Driver of the Year, Chris Beaver.
There you go.
Yes, there we go. I'm so sorry, Chris, come on. Okay, so Driver of the Year, do we have an explanation? Anyone?
Yeah, Mark or Chris?
Ian. Ian's got it.
Chris Beaver was nominated for the, I'll get up here. Was nominated for the NWRA Driver of the Year Award. The City of Stillwater did put that nomination in for him. Two of our employees were put in. Chris was nominated as the Small Public Sector Driver of the Year Award, which isn't small apples at all. They have 10 divisions that they put out on this award. There's a large public sector and there's private sector, commercial, and stuff like that. But there was over 1,000 entries for this award. So we are very proud of the accomplishment that he has done. Chris Beaver's been with us for five and a half years. He has a clean driving record. Does an absolutely wonderful job. And we got letters of recommendations from customers that he services on a daily basis, anywhere's, from the kids at the daycare center that see the truck coming and he'll honk for them and wave, you know? They love it, right? All the way down to storage units that know that there's no telling what is going to be left there for them and commend him on doing such a fantastic job, making sure that it's clean when he leaves. All the way down to, if I could, I'm sorry. This lady just wrote one that I thought was very, very good. I won't read the whole thing, but she's known Chris for a long time. And she remarks that he is trustworthy and dependable, a young man with integrity, and strong determination, and has very good work ethics. He volunteers in his community and his church and provides for his family. So I know that the City of Stillwater has a lot of employees that exude the same principles and ethics in their work and home life. But this award not only looks at the driver's capability of being safe out on the road, but it also looks at, you know, what this person does within their community, within their families, you know? Are they working the eight to five? Or do they put in the extra time in their community, which this gentleman does? And we're very pleased to have him working for us. And like I said, I know we have plenty of other people within the City of Stillwater that have these same qualities. But I'm just very proud to have him. He is our second recipient for this award in three years. So that's a big pat on our shoulders. I'd also like to comment really quick. The City of Stillwater and their, the choices that they made as far as their safety program, that means a lot to us. And I believe it does to the rest of the city as well, to protect these guys when they're out there working for the public. Chris Knight used to hold the same position that I hold right now. And as the new safety manager, I have the utmost confidence that he will do a fantastic job. Mr. Davenport has done a very, very good job as well. But the time and the thought that they put into making sure that these gentlemen out on the streets every day are protected. And a lot of people don't think about waste or the trash service until something goes wrong, right? When somebody decides to use your container as their move-out spot or your lid's open and doesn't get picked up, that's generally when we hear that stuff. But we do get a lot of other compliments. And this gentleman right here is definitely proof. We're very proud of him, everything that he does every day. 100 miles plus a day, plus 200 containers a day in a town of 50,000 people out on the ground every day. And this industry is a very, very risky industry. So we are very proud to have him as a Driver of the Year with no accidents. Our Waste Management Department does a very, very good job in its safety. And I'm very proud to be here to recognize him for the achievement that he has got.
Thank you.
Did you have another job? We saw a room in your area. Okay, now we can go to Consent Docket. And Mr. Dorman, did you?
I ask if you would remove Item A to the, I need to make a short announcement on that one.
Okay, so we are going to remove Item A, councilors?
I also wanted to hear a little bit more about, you've got my agenda, Mayor.
I'm so sorry, there you go.
Fun of bubbling around looking for my agenda. The item on the increased health cost, the budget amendment. Can we hear a little bit about Item D?
So you would like to pull that so we can discuss too?
Please.
Okay, so removing Items A and D on the Consent Docket.
Move approval minus those two items.
Okay.
Second.
We have approval, a motion and a second to approve everything but Items A and D on the Consent Docket. And that passes 3 to 0. That takes us to public comment on agenda. Items not scheduled for public hearing, and we don't have any speakers. Which takes us to items removed from Consent Docket. Mr. Dorman.
On the item for, Item A, which is minutes for the meetings of May, it says May 28 and June 1. The May 28 entries actually should be May 18. That's a scrivener's error. So I would ask that if you approve the minutes, that you approve them for May 18 and June 1, 2015.
Motion approval with that correction noted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the correction noted. And those minutes for May 18 and June 1 were approved 3 to 0. And Item D, the budget amendments for increased cost of health insurance, prescription coverage, and workers' compensation settlements. Mr. Galloway, could you explain?
Yes. This is not an uncommon occurrence. But at the beginning of the year, we work with our third-party administrator on our insurance. We also look at our trends on workers' comp. We project all of those estimated claim payments for the year. And we budget that at the beginning of the year. And we'll be determining the entire cost for the health insurance and for workers' comp insurance claims. We have a self-insurance fund. The general fund, the SUA, CEDAC, RIT, small amount, we, all the funds transfer their respective share of those estimates and deposit it in this self-insurance fund. Now we track our claims. We can't always project claims exactly. This year, we had some unexpectedly high health claims that were being extended. We had more workers' comp claims than we had originally anticipated. So to close out the year June 30 and be able to pay all of those claims, this recommendation is to make a supplemental appropriation for the current year's budget, not next year, to, from our balance, to make that fund whole to pay all of those claims. So it's just a budget adjustment. It's not an additional budget item. We're not recommending any increases other than our estimates. The claims this year were higher than the estimates, so we need to make those claim payments.
Good, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve this item?
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item D. And that passes 3 to 0. Our next item is General Orders. Mr. Galloway.
Do we need, do we need to make a mention for, all of the public hearing items have been recommended?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need an actual, we need a motion on that, on 7A.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the public hearings, they've all been postponed, but we still need a?
We'll need motions to reset those.
Motions to reset, okay. So when, just?
The annexation, is it?
July 6.
July 6.
Does that need to be included in the motion?
Is that A?
Yes.
So A for July, is July 6?
All of them.
All of them are July 6, thank you.
Did they reset all of them with one motion? Since they're all reset to July 6?
Looking at it very quickly. Yes, you could do that. Reset Items 7A through D for July 6.
Still moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reset all items under public hearings for July 6, 2015. And that motion passes 3 to 0. Which takes us to General Orders. Mr. Galloway.
Okay, the first item, bid recommendations for the engagement to contractor for this 2014 CDBG project. Where staff is requesting that be pulled from the agenda from this evening. We did receive the bids, but the bids exceed the terms of the grant. And so staff's going to have to revisit that issue and either rebid or make other adjustments. And we'll bring that back at a later date.
Okay, thank you. That takes us down to number 10, ordinances. On first reading, ordinance number 3307, Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 4420 West 6th Avenue from CS Commercial General District and A Agriculture District to RTM 2 Family and multifamily residential district.
Discussion? Do we have a motion to advance?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance. Ordinance number 3305 to second reading. And ordinance number 3305 is advanced to second reading with a vote of 3 to 0. On first reading, ordinance number 3309, Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 1 in general to create Section 2-2, City Clerk and declaring an emergency. This one requires a little explanation.
Yes.
Because this is something that the council has ever, actually never, ever done. In the city charter, there are provisions for the Office of City Clerk and Finance Director. And basically, under the charter, the City Clerk is the Finance Director unless the city council, by the passage of an ordinance, decides to separate the position and make it a standalone office. And so the request tonight is for you to do that very thing, which would be to create the separate Office of City Clerk, separating it from the Finance Director's position. And then it will also establish the line of the hierarchy under where it will be placed within administration. Because she'll be placed under the general authority of the city manager, as was the Finance Director. So in all other respects, it mirrors what's already in the charter.
No increase to the budget, no increase to the personnel number.
No.
No, nothing like that.
Just administrative changes.
This is probably something that should have been done quite some time ago. We functionally operate that way. The Finance Director by charter is the clerk. But the Finance Director is always appointed a deputy clerk. And the deputy clerk does the clerk's work, provides the clerk's services to city council. Because the two jobs, as we run larger, are just two complete jobs in and of themselves. So we functionally kind of operated that way. And I think with the transition that we're unfortunately facing, changing a CFO, and we may be acting for a period of time, this is a good time to clean it up and make our ordinance consistent with where we operate. And our deputy clerk would be the full city clerk. And then we can clarify that. But it's no cost, no changes to anything other than clarification of the title.
And by the way, the deputy city clerk is way better at pushing those buttons than the current city clerk.[1202.33][1202.33][laughter] You don't want, haven't you?
She's pretty good at the calculator buttons, but not the voting buttons.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance 3305 to second reading. And motion. Ordinance number 3305 has, is advanced to second reading with a vote of 3 to 0. That takes us down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Galloway, or excuse me, Mr. Dorman.
Nothing to report tonight, ma'am.
Mr. Galloway.
Nothing further this evening.
City Council. Okay. That takes us to questions and inquiries. Anybody? Appointments. We do have one appointment tonight. And it is for the non-voting physician seat on the Stillwater Medical Center Board. And based on Stillwater Medical Center, Stillwater Medical Center's, medical staff's recommendation, I nominate Dr. Stephen Cummings to be the non-voting member on the Stillwater Medical Center Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And Dr. Stephen Cummings is approved as the new non-voting, non-voting medical staff for Stillwater Medical Center. Do I have a motion to adjourn city council?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the June 15 city council meeting. And that was approved 3 to 0. City council is adjourned. That moves us to Stillwater Utilities Authority. I call the meeting to order for the June 15, 2015 Stillwater Utility Authority's meeting. And that takes us to the Consent Docket trustees. Does anyone wish to remove anything? Remove an item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. And the Consent Docket is approved 3 to 0. We don't have anybody for public comment or, so that takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Galloway.
Nothing further this time.
Mr. Dorman.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Trustees. Do we have a motion and a second to adjourn the June 15, 2015 Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting?
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. And we are adjourned with a vote of 3 to 0 from the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. That takes us to Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. I call to order the June 15, 2015 Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. That takes us to the Consent Docket trustees. Does anyone wish to remove an item? Motion or second?
Did you get these minutes right?
Got these right.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of 3 to 0. That takes us to General Orders. And we have one item that we want to discuss. Actually, I want, I will just fill everybody in on what's happened from the last meeting, June 1 meeting, to this meeting. We had discussed having CEDAC, Stillwater Economic Development Advisory Council, approve the top three candidates for the urban planner. But there's really no reason that we can't have CEDAC approve, look through all 13 applications and rank them. The members of CEDAC would rank them. And then they will, I would like for them to form a subcommittee. And the subcommittee will take the rankings from all the CEDAC members and take the top three, vet the top three, make a recommendation for the top candidate, take it back to CEDAC, have CEDAC vote on it in July. And then CEDAC, a representative from CEDAC, will bring that recommendation to us. Has a lot, it's a think tank, remember? That's the way I wanted to, the way I do describe CEDAC. Business leaders from every part of Stillwater. And it just makes sense that they help us choose the urban planner for economic development. So I wanted to make sure that council is okay with that since our last discussion, just to make sure. Does anybody have any comments on that?
I think it's, I think it's fine. Are they clear on criteria to?
We are going to give them the criteria because we are going to discuss that tonight and just make sure we're all on the same page. Once we're all on the same page, then I will take it to the CEDAC meeting on June 17, actually on Wednesday. So to move us forward, smart, planned, in a smart, planned way, we need to make sure we are all on the same page as far as a goal. Why are we hiring the urban planner? What do we want from the urban planner? What do we want the urban planner to actually do for Stillwater? There's a lot of things that could be done. But I would like, so I had asked each councillor to think about this and bring it to council. And councillor Nahara and councillor Darlington did send me what they thought. And, but I'd like to hear what, councillor Weaver, what are you?
Well, just from my recollections of our past discussions, you know, we need to have a city purpose. And while we're doing it, we're not just developing those lots for the sake of developing it. It needs to have, in my view, an obvious city purpose. How is the city benefiting from having this in terms of what goes there and how it enhances and expands downtown? So having a city purpose with the idea of enhancing downtown, serving as a magnet for other future development in that immediate area, I think is also important. And I know that's kind of vague, but, you know, we don't want a planner to just come and look, in my view, just those two lots. They need to put those lots in perspective to everything that's downtown and what the other community members might say about the other lots and the other assets that are around. And just build a plan that makes sense, that spurs economic development, serves as a magnet for downtown, and makes it obvious this isn't just a private development. This is something that's serving a public purpose.
Okay, very good. Counselors?
I think I said the same thing as councillor Weaver when I replied, but to add a little bit more to that, you know, and learning what an urban planner is supposed to do, you know, it takes me a little bit on what councillor Weaver said. I want them to look at the whole picture. You're right, it's not just about adding to downtown store. Does it make sense? You know, we have to look at the whole picture of things. And I think for us to make sure we have a clear vision of exactly what it is that needs to be a part of that downtown Stillwater area will help guide that thought process. Because it's that challenging time. Well, downtown's just on the cusp of becoming, you know, something really big. And so I hope that they can help us figure out that while we are very proud of where we've come and our history of Stillwater, it's time to take that next step and help us define together what does that next step need to look like. And so that's what I'm hoping that.
Okay, very good. It, councillor Nahara, councillor Darlington, Vice Mayor Darlington, basically said the same thing. And I threw all of ours together. So I'm going to reiterate almost what you both have said just in a few different words. We need a plan for the downtown development for the highest and best use of the property, the two public blocks, while also considering the balance of public-private space to spur the overall growth of downtown. And we need to update the downtown elements of the Z Plan, which was part of the Puma Plan. Not that we need a new one, we just need an update because that was 10 years old. So we recognize that that is an important plan. But after 10 years, we, I think we all recognize it's going to have to be updated. Does that sound?
It sounds good.
Okay. So with that said, then the criteria for hiring will be, I will make suggestions, you guys can add. guys can add, when we tell CDAC members to rank based on these criteria, tell me if you agree with these. Urban planners should have a knowledge of Stillwater. We don't need information that we already know, such as population, and we don't just need to go back and trace every step. We already know a lot of stuff. We want someone who has a willingness to work with local developers, the public, CDAC trustees, anybody that wants to be a part of this process to help us move forward. And the urban planner should have a good relationship with past clients, a good portfolio of inventive, fresh wow ideas. Because I think we described it, what's your wow? What's your vision of wow? So, what else do we need here? What criteria do we need here?
I would hope they also have a, in thinking of expertise, able to move us forward. You know, sometimes we, you know, being able to facilitate conversation and dialogue so that things can move forward and it's not drug out for forever. You know, is there going to be a defined timeline that they're going to work with us? Is there, you know, a timeframe we're thinking of?
What is our, do we want to, want me to take that to CDAC to see, to have them help us lay out the timeline, or does anyone have a suggestion of the timeline?
Well, I think, I think when you look at the proposals, you'll get some clues from the, it was a plans for qualifications, but most of them gave some, some brief proposal of this, and some of them talked about a timeline. But I think it's, I think when you go through the process, CDAC goes through the process, I think you're going to have to, when you select a firm, I think you're going to have to sit down with them and negotiate a timeline. I think, I get a sense from the council, you want to proceed as quickly as possible, but yet take plenty of time to make sure we don't rush into the wrong thing.
Yes.
That's hard to say whether that's 30 days or six months. I don't know. But I think when you, when CDAC makes a recommendation to you for an urban planner, that would be one of the first things you set down with that group, and we're going to need to negotiate with the selected firm, a proposal, a timeline, a contract, an amount. All those things are left for negotiation, but I, something you can discuss, but I think time is of the essence, but don't rush it.
Right. Well, I think, I probably should have clarified timeline as far as this whole process itself. Are we?
I think, I think CDAC could possibly bring back to the July 20th meeting a recommendation for you.
Okay.
And then, from that, if you make a selection that night, the selection would probably would be to meet with that selected firm and begin negotiations, because there is not a contract as yet to get.
You know, I know we want to move with all speed, but at the same time, an urban planner, anyone in that sort of business knows that if we really mean we want them to get input from stakeholders and other members of the community, that's going to take some time.
Yeah, it will.
And they should have experience enough to where they can lay out, you know, a suggested time schedule for how they would meet with the various groups. But they wouldn't know that until they'd interacted with either the city staff or CDAC or us. But we need to allow them to, if we say, if we want your plan by August 1st, they're not going to have time to talk to anybody.
No.
So, we need to have a little patience.
And that's the most important thing, that they do talk to everybody involved. So, we have the best plan.
We'll get that recommendation from, from the planner.
Okay. So, I think the last thing I want to say about this is that, while we're all excited about this, we know we can't do this all at once. I think we're all on the same page there. We need the pieces or the steps in place that are compatible and complementary and realistic financially for us, too. I think that would be important. And I think that we will all want to see, before we actually hire, make the decision to hire an urban planner, to see a project that they've done for a city. So, we have all of the knowledge that we can. So, anyway, I just wanted to discuss this tonight and to make sure we're all on the same page. And we will, I will take this to CDAC on Wednesday. And if anybody has any comments or suggestions, feel free to email me.
I have, in preparation for that, unfortunately, I have to miss that meeting, but I have, and I will give to you, I have on flash drives, all 13 proposals in PDF form. Didn't want to make 12 copies of 680 pages, but that way you'll be able to give each of the members of CDAC their copy. It also has the original RFP, so they can look at that and see what these people, firms responded to. So, it should be real easy for them to go through those. And I think you'll find almost everyone did cite cities that they've worked for, examples and references, so we'll be able to look at almost every one of them, where they've worked and who they've worked with. It should be a good process.
Good. It's exciting and?
It's very exciting.
Possibilities are, at this point, endless. And it'll be exciting to see. So, anything else? Any discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? CETA?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn CETA. CETA is adjourned with a vote of three to zero, and that concludes tonight's program. Mr. Weaver?